Good evening, I'd like to call this one of the counties for the best people who are.
Good evening, I'd like to have a joint meeting in Edgecombe County to order. At this time, I entertain the motion to adopt the agenda. For the presentation, let me stand clear before the merger. I would like to call that as a report if they should join me with the end contact. And then.
This time I'm going to read.
Good evening, Eric Evans, Edgecombe County man.
Wayne Adams, District 7.
Brian Williams, District 5.
Edward Powell, District 1.
George Thorne, District 4.
Natalie Fett, Edgecombe County County Department.
At this time, I would jump in. If you're ever some kind of, it's just a guy.
Good evening again, everyone, it's good to see you, it's always nice to have this opportunity for us to meet and share with each other. I won't be long before you tonight, I just want to share with you a few updates from the county's perspective. And you do have a copy of my presentation at your seat. Tonight, as well, for a few minutes, I want to talk about some notable accomplishments. We've got many, but I just want to share a few with you tonight. Want to talk about some important initiatives, priorities for next fiscal year, this certainly offer opportunity for you to ask any questions that you might have. So first in regards to notable accomplishments. So I see it as an accomplishment us weathering this workforce storm. And I'm sure you all have been going through it, seems like everybody, every company, public, private, has been facing workforce challenges here lately. We certainly have been doing everything we possibly can do to weather that and to not just survive it, but to hopefully thrive through it. And we've employed a few strategies to try to deal with that. First of all, we made some investments in technology. I want to recognize Jason Webb, who is our Chief Information Officer, he certainly led the charge of the number of these initiatives in the last couple of years. We made investments to switch over to Office 365 for all of our staff. We totally changed over our phone system to a voice over Iphone system. We've made investments in audiovisual equipment and several of our meeting spaces in the building. All to because COVID and these staffing shortages have demanded more flexibility, mobility from all of us. I'm sure all of us have had to learn to do some new things as it relates to technology that we never thought we'd have to do before, we had to learn pretty quickly. Also, we had to rethink work. You know, we are so used to, you know, as everyone, you know, used to doing business the same way we've always been doing business. Our citizens are used to us providing all of our services from our office or workspace or what have you. But because of the demands of the workforce and, you know, high turnover, we had to rethink that. And so we had to open ourselves to reconsider how and where that our team members could do their jobs. And certainly there are a lot of things that we do in county government, it just have to be there to do that, right? But we look for every opportunity that we could where jobs could be either totally transitioned to remote or at least some hybrid version of that. So not a tremendous number of employees, but out of about 550 employees, right now, we've got about 24 or 25 of our staff members that work from home, either totally or some hybrid version. And just, you know, where we are in the workforce forced us to have to rethink how we work and where we do that work from. We've also, in the job market being so competitive, of course, we would love to have said, we're just going to give everybody a 10, 15% raise so we don't lose a single employee, but that's just not possible, right? So we've had to look for creative ways to try to put some incentives out there to try to, you know, to hire and retain good qualified staff. And so one of the things, a few things we've done is we've tried to reward growth in our staff. So what we're doing is what we call credential incentives. Where if in a particular position, there is a verifiable, bona fide, takes a little sweat to get it counted credential. It's not just a two or three hour, you know, quick online class you take and they email your certificate, I mean, you really got to put some time into it. And it's a verifiable credential, then we've been looking for ways to reward it. So we've been able to do that in a number of our departments. And so that is not totally shut the floodgates, but it's helped to slow that down a little bit. And that's just one of a few things we're doing. Also, we had to revisit our purpose, you know, after all of us trying to do our jobs in the midst of COVID. I don't know if that's all, but it seems like the public is a little bit more on edge than it used to be and sometimes a few of them are not as friendly and the work just gets harder and harder. Individually, employees are asking, why am I doing this? You know, why, why am I even putting myself through this and the pay is not where I wanted to be and maybe I should do something else? Well, not only as individuals do we have to, you know, we have that thought, but as an organization, we had to rethink that. We had to rethink and consider our why, you know? Why is it that we put so much energy and time and effort into the things that we do to serve our citizens and to provide these services that we provide? And so we, as an organization, we've thought through the why, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in just a few minutes. But overall, I list this as a, as a success because we've weathered it. In fact, you should celebrate yourself too, because you've weathered it too, right? It's been a very difficult last two or three years, but we're still here, right? We're still providing services, you know, we never stopped providing services and though we've been short-stabbed, you know, we've never, you know, it's like trying to balance all of those plates, you know? A few have gotten wobbly over the last couple of years, but we've not dropped any very serious ones anyway. And so, you know, I think that's something that we need to celebrate, certainly we do that as an organization. In fact, I feel confident in saying that not only have we come through this, I think we as an organization have come through this strongly. And we are, we are really retooling and repositioning ourselves as an organization based on some of the things that, the lessons that we've learned in the last couple of years. Also, in the last year, you hear about Kingsborough Industrial Park, I think every time, it's not because it's the only thing we got to talk about, but it is a big thing in Edgecombe County. It's not just a big thing in Edgecombe County, it is a big thing in the state of North Carolina, this is a big deal. Kingsborough Industrial Park. And I bring that up again because we have continued to build on the value of our business park, to build on its attractiveness. One of the ways that we've been able to do that is to continue to grow and improve the infrastructure that's available there. We've had water and sewer there for a long time and, you know, there's been internet access in and around it for a long time. And then we have a, you know, a service road that runs through it that's named after our chairman, Mr. Leonard Wiggins. And, you know, so we got up, but every year we try to do a little something and we're pursuing grant opportunities. Federal COVID funding provided us great opportunities for that and we try our best to take advantage of that. We've received, we've been approved for a couple of grants, one grant is to increase our water capacity out at the park. So once that work is complete, there is very few businesses that would look, that could locate out there and that their demand for water would be so big that we, we couldn't provide it. We can provide a lot of water out in that park once this is done. We're also working on trying to secure funding to increase our sewer capacity. Our goal is that every time we sit down and talk with a prospect, no matter what they make or they plan to make, no matter how big they might be. We want, as they go down that checklist, asking those questions, do you have this, do you have that, can you do this, can you do that? We want to be able to say yes to every one of those questions. And right now, really, the only one that we can't quite say yes to is on the sewer side. We can provide lots of sewer, but if, if that whole park were to fill up tomorrow, we could not provide sewer for all of them. So we continue to build out our infrastructure there at Kingsborough. Right now, we have a total site control of right at 2,000 acres. Through some ARPA funds, we're able to close off some purchase agreements there. And so on the map that you probably will clearly see at your place, we actually own, I don't know if that'll show up there. But that road running north-south there that's intersecting that 64 bypass, that's Kingsborough Road. The county owns everything to the east of 64 bypass. Carolina's Gateway has an option on the land to the west of it, but the county owns everything that's showing up there in the topo map, everything east of Kingsborough Road. So that's something that we're very excited about. We also, you know, because of this, we have been very appealing in particular to EV or electric vehicle related companies. Whether it be companies that manufacture batteries for electric vehicles or manufacture vehicle car. Right now, we've got four active projects that are looking at Kingsborough Industrial Park that are EV related. Whereas you'll recall, a few years ago, we thought we had landed Triangle Tire and of course eventually they pulled the plug on that, Triangle Tire pulled the plug on that. That project was about $800 million of investment and we were like, this is changing the life of Edgecombe County forever. These projects start at $1 billion and go north. We just got a new prospect last week, it's very early, so I try to manage my excitement about these things. But they're talking about first phase, $4 billion. They calculated on my phone when we calculate that, $4 billion. All of them are around 1,000 jobs plus, some of them 2,000 jobs plus. So because we are so ready at Kingsborough, we are very attractive to these types of companies. Because all of them are off to the races, they're trying to capitalize on where they think the market is going to go. And they're looking for a place where they can be to production as quickly as possible. We can offer that at Kingsborough better than any park anywhere in the state of North Carolina. Also, KDC, as you know, we had the unfortunate fire there a couple of years ago, all moved up. But in recent months, the fire damage portion of that facility has been totally cleaned, cleaned off, cleared out. And now you look at it, it looks like a concrete pad that just got pulled. And so there are two parts of the building, the building to the left and the building to the far back that are still standing, they're doing some renovations to it. And it is ready for somebody to move in and build something, install, manufacturing something. You probably read in newspaper a few months ago, ownership of the building recently changed hands, there's a new owner, it's the owner investor who purchased that building. And now we have two prospects that are looking at that building. So some exciting things going on at Kingsborough. One of our other accomplishments of the last year or so has been our strategic investment of our ARPA funds, or American Rescue Plan Act funds. And I know, I think, I'm pretty sure y'all can relate to this. You know, when the, when the federal government just calls you up and says, hey, we're getting ready to send you $10 million. And by the way, we're going to send you half of it, we haven't even finished writing the rules on it. And then we want you to have to spend it, but don't spend it the wrong way, because then five years from now, we're going to come back and we're going to audit your books. You know, so it's a blessing, but it's also a burden, right? So we got just under $10 million and we had, we had a very difficult decision as to how we're going to spend it, because you can only spend it once. And I'm grateful for our board and the work that they did with us as a staff. And our decision making, how we were going to strategically invest this money that we can only spend once. We sort of looked at it from three perspectives, we said, how can we spend this to help people? How can we spend it to help the county, us as an organization? And how can we spend this for the future as well? So we came up with, with a plan as to how we were going to spend that fund, those funds. And so as far as the people, we, we are offering some supportive services for the elderly through our Office on Aging. We have a crisis intervention program that we ran through our Department of Social Services. In fact, of 250,000, we've spent that down to just over $500. We have assisted 535 families with different types of assistance, whether it was rental assistance, utility assistance, and a number of different things. Right now, we are still taking applications for what we call an urgent home repair program. So those are the programs that we stood up to help the people. As it relates to the county, our objective was how we might invest some of this money internally was to first of all, provide some short-term budget relief for us. But at the same time, to address some long-term capital needs. So you'll see the list, I won't read everything there, but we satisfied some obligations that we still owed at Kingsborough, site prep work out there. Put some money in our payroll and a few other things that has our bonuses, we're doing some capital improvements now. Capital improvements that otherwise we would either have had to save up for a few years or borrow some money. So I'm very happy how we were able to invest those funds. And then finally, for the future broadband. So the board has decided that of just under $10 million, that we're going to set aside $1 million to invest in the advancement and deployment of broadband in the county. This is going to be leveraged alongside $4 million of state funds through the Great Grant Program. Company Break Speed just found out recently they were awarded funds to help expand broadband opportunities in the county. The board is going to continue to explore opportunities, whether we work with that company or do something outside of that. But between our million and their 4 million, we feel like that we can help to invest in broadband access getting to anywhere from additional 2,000 to 3,000 households in Edgecombe County. So we're excited about that, you know, that's a very complicated thing. None of us are broadband experts, other than being a really good end user, right? I use a lot of internet service. None of us are experts, so we are together learning as we go, we're trying to inform ourselves to make good decisions, but we've been excited about that opportunity. Quickly, I want to mention a few important initiatives that we've been looking at. I mentioned a moment ago, you know, we had to take a step back and, and sort of look within ourselves and ask ourselves, but why, you know, why, why are we doing this? What, what is our purpose, what's, what's our vision? So our staff, some of our staff and the board at their retreats spent some time looking at that, looking at what's our vision for our county from the perspective of our citizens? What's the vision for us as an organization? And so through several sessions, a lot of hard work, we whittled down some really good feedback to, to what we call a two-sided vision statement. So the vision for our county now, this is our new vision statement, is that Edgecombe County is a historic place that values its citizens and natural resources and creates opportunities where people are proud to live, work, and play for generations to come. That sounds like a place I'd like to live. And the other side of that vision statement is for us as an organization. If that's what we want our county to be, then who do we have to be as an organization to help our county to get there? So this is the side of our vision statement that faces in. And so as an organization, we value our employees so that it can be an organization committed to providing exceptional services to our citizens through an innovative, passionate, and creative team. Devoted to excellence, integrity, transparency for the continued growth of our county and staff. That sounds like a place I would want to work. So we're excited about that, we are not just, not just doing that to have, you know, cute vision statements to put up on the wall so we can say we've got one. This is something that we are keeping in front of us and allowing it to drive budget decisions, allowing it to drive management decisions, allowing it to drive how we invest money for the future. So you're going to be seeing and hearing a lot more about that. But we need something to drive us, right? We need something to motivate us to go from where we are to where we need to be, it's like building a bridge. And so, you know, reaching back to the legacy of the former manager, Mr. Lorenzo Harmon, he used to say, I'm tired of being at the top and bottom of every bad list, right? He used to tell us that, many of us had the opportunity to work with him, I was honored to work with him for 14 years before he retired. He used to tell us that all the time. So we've taken that sentiment and we whittled it down to our call to action, which simply is get off the list, right? And there are lots of lists, we don't want to get off it, move down it, move up it, but something about these lists that Edgecombe County finds itself being on, we want to affect those lists. And we're doing a lot of work, we really roll up our sleeves on this. We've got a group that just met a few weeks ago, sort of strategic visioning group, that's some of our stakeholders that are joining us. We're doing work internally with our staff, work with the board, so this is something that you'll hear from us more as well. So some other things we're doing. One of the lists that we have to be on is that we have, we are usually in the top five highest in employment rates in the state. And I've been working with the county for, for 21 years and it seems like we've always been in the top five, oftentimes we're number one or two. Every now and then we'll slip down to six or seven as soon as we start celebrating and we go back to top line. So we're working on a suite of initiatives to help impact that in the long term. And so these are some things that I won't say a whole lot about tonight because I got to roll this out to our board at our blessed work session on Thursday, on Wednesday. But I just want all of you to know that we're working on some initiatives, that it's just not going to be a, a one-year thing, a one-time thing. We're trying to, to do some work to plant some trees, right? Twenty years from now, somebody will be able to stand under and find some shade. And so we're going, you're going to hear more about some initiatives that will fall under this umbrella that we're calling Edgecombe Works. Broadband deployment, I talked about that a moment ago, I realized when I picked that picture, that should be a laptop sitting in front of that little girl, right? So this is, you know, this is an outdated picture right now.
That's just what they got now when they get property.
That's right, that's right. So she's got to use that notebook because she doesn't have internet now, right? So that's, that's part of the future, that's part of this work, you know, there's very few things that we can do without access to broadband, right? So that's part of the work that we're going to be doing this. Briefly, I just want to mention that as part of our priorities, our board at their retreat a couple of months ago went through a couple of exercises just to get feedback from them as to, you know, we can't do it all, we don't have enough money to do everything. But what is, what's most important to you? And these were four things that the board shared with us. First one being compensation plan overall, we are working on overhauling our compensation plan. And I say that intentionally because it's not just a marketing study, though we needed that, we've not done one in almost 10 years. But it's not just that, it's really overhauling the structure of our pay system and our, our job titles and all of that, to modernize a lot of that, to, to really realign our structures. So it's a tremendous amount of work, we're, we're trying to get that done in time enough to hopefully build that into the budget for next year. Because we've got to do something, we're, we're losing a lot of employees. We lose a lot of employees that hate to leave. We have people that tell us quite often, say, you know, I, I don't want to go, but, you know, gas, eggs, and rent and everything else, and I just can't ignore that anymore. We have people that tell us that all the time. So, you know, we're limited in what in our resources, so we can only do so much, right? Really appreciate our board that they have clearly made this a priority, they've made our facilities a priority, and I appreciate that. And it's not just because we got great folks working for us and it's an awesome organization. But, you know, in, as we stand right now in the Department of Social Services, we've got 174 positions on the books. And we've got 45 plus or minus vacancies, it changes from day to day. Ms. Betty Battle, our director's doing a great job, her team is doing a great job and they are covering the bases, they're making sure that they do what they need to do, but they are holding on to it by, by the tips of their fingernails. And so that's just one example, but, you know, we see that played out throughout our, our organization. So we're working on compensation plan overhaul, they've also said that public safety to include share of EMS and fires is a priority, education of workforce is a priority, as well as economic growth as it has always been. So just a few things I want to share with you tonight, again, it's my honor to be here and certainly I'm open to ask, answering questions if you have any, if I can.
So it's a.
So, tonight, we'll be discussing the budget request for national public schools. I would like to first thank the commissioners for their support, their presence tonight, also our board. Your support has allowed for some great accomplishments this year, and tonight was a highlight of the business conference. I'd like to recognize first my cabinet and staff back there, if you would stand forward, see you back there. I just want to thank you for your hard work. I'm going to give you a little clap. I'm going to go with them and tonight, they present, they'll go with their certain areas. If you have any questions, make sure you just, you could ask them then since there are yet. So, briefly, what the agenda tonight is, you're welcome. We're going to have a review of the last year, this year. We're going to go to the budget. We're going to talk about challenges and the requests. And at this time, completed projects by Shannon Bates. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, what I just want to go over a few projects that we've completed this past fiscal year. You can see in the first slide, we started several years ago with the high schools. We worked out toward middle schools, renovating high school gymnasiums, bleachers, sanding, repening floors. We worked through the middle schools, and, and finally, the last couple of years, we've started working on the elementary schools. This past year, you can see DS Johnson, we replaced all the floor tile with a new seam, to welded seam floors, a lot of maintenance fully. We, we completed DS Johnson. You can see basketball view elementary school, these floors were original floors. They were asbestos floor tiles. They were all intact, not a safety issue, but it was time to update those floors since we were trying to complete all of the elementary floor floors. And Eaglewood Elementary. We completed three floors this past year, another elementary, being the last one that's in this upcoming fiscal year of, of building renovation. Completed roofing projects. Picture you're looking at on the left is Southern Ash High School, it's a four-hundred building. That's the completion of a single membrane roof. That roof was twenty-plus years old and extended its life. Bailey Elementary School, the canopy, of course, was, was about eighteen years old. And National High School, two thousand and one, we're in phase two this past year. And phase three, we completed in this upcoming fiscal year, in roof, roofing projects. Window replacements, a lot of this funding was through the ESSR funding. We're really proud of updating without the ESSR, without the ESSR money, there was no way the cost of window projects would we have ever been able to accomplish what we have accomplished in the district. What you're seeing on the left is Edwards Middle School, the four left, and I'm not sure if you can even see this corner, or the older windows and then to the right of the newer double insulated windows. Cooper's Pre-K was also completed, Springfield Elementary, in the four classroom building, along with Southern Ash Middle School, the two-hundred, three-hundred, five-hundred, and six-hundred wings. And of course, Rocky Mountain Middle, we completed some of the gymnasium where we had leaks over the past few years. What you're seeing here is on the left side is Edwards Middle School. We have had a thousand year footage of paving for stacking where we had a lot of issues with congestion out on, on Highway forty-three and there in the, in the Red Oak area. The right side, you can see is National High Middle. We completed this over spring break where there's starting to develop, behind the school. That's, that's going to end up being quite a few houses, and they were not wanting us to stack our traffic count on Highway fifty-eighth or along the, the adjacent street. We did this in-house over spring break. We're paving at the twenty-nine and end of, end of the fiscal year. This is an HVAC project we're doing in-house at Springfield Elementary, phase one. Of course, this is also completed with ESSR funds, but completed within-house projects. This is the VRS system that I've been talking about for several years. We first piloted this at DS Johnson five years ago, on the one-hundred, two-hundred, and the three-hundred wings. The only thing that does not have a Johnson on it, the cafeteria dining room, they have packet systems that were replaced as well. But this is a new system, it's very energy efficient. We're saving on average thirty-plus percent in energy savings upon using this. And we've sent several of our HVAC people to school to, to training on, on working on this, on this, this type of system. It was originally used, and I, I will give a little background again, in, in hospitals, and it's a Japanese technology, but it's slowly migrating to the educational side. We took, we took the, I guess, the jump to try it in the education facility. And everywhere we've used it, the teachers are really pleased with control of each factor. This is the picture Edwards as well. This is a total renovation. I just mentioned we completed all the windows in the entire campus. Mechanically, we should be finishing that. On the, on the right side, you're looking at the media center, that's the last day. We've been working on this project for roughly eighteen months now. It's been about a three, three and a half million dollar project with windows and mechanical. The principal has been very gracious moving kids around. We've been doing this entire project within-house for us, as well as contractors moving kids around to complete this. So, it, hopefully, it's coming to an end before the end of the test. In the next couple of weeks, we'll be getting all the COs on, on this project. Finally, you can see the suspended ceilings. If you've ever been in Edwards, they had all the open ceilings. You can see all the, all the piping, all the boiler, the chillers. And now, you've got all the suspended ceilings throughout, I'll be really delighting. Hopefully, within the next twelve months, starting July, we should hopefully start reaping the, the benefits of all of the energy savings. So, we'll be able to capture a twelve months and see exactly pulling borders and chillers offline, what, what a full savings will be and the payback of, of this full renovation. Finally, we've got some, some projects that are currently in progress. Of course, you know, we've been talking about Red Oak Elementary School. This is a rendering of the project we're starting from the architects. This is a picture from about a week and a half ago. The, the building is basically complete. I think we got CO on the final piece, the six-hundred, which is the back of the gymnasium last week. The, the part you're seeing up front here is the serpentine line, that's, that's the existing old campus that's been demolished. And that'll be the new car stacking line. And you see the water tower in the background. We're planning on keeping that renovated, painted, and that will fall in, in one of the lanes, the islands of the serpentine line. And finally, the rural Nashville house, this is something that we've just, in the last two weeks, put back out for bid. We originally bid this last March. Bids come in way over. And as Mr. Evans had mentioned, the, the climate of, of everything that has been going on, prices have increased. We didn't have the funding to move forward with the contract just due to labor costs and all increasing costs in general. We have since, hopefully, figured out means of, of funding this project. The bids will be opened the twenty-third of May, and hopefully, we should be able to secure the funding to award the contract. This is another rendering of the, the front entrance of, of the field house. Any questions for me at this time?
Would you have a listing of any capital needs for the four schools on the Edgecombe County side that have been kind of thrown a backbone?
There is, if we're looking mechanically, which is, is the biggest need basically for our school systems. I, I do have in this next fiscal year, a chiller replacement on phase one of this campus. It's roughly about twenty thousand dollar chillers, the bigger of the two chillers. It's the, the phase one, you know, this campus will be in two phases, then we have two chillers. That, that, that money is in the next fiscal year's budget. And there's some carpeting, a little bit of carpeting needs as well in the next fiscal year's budget. But mechanically, we have basically touched all four of these schools, and they're mechanically in as good a shape as it's going to be out in the district.
Good evening. Please just stand before you receive and go over our proposed, proposed budget for twenty-three, twenty-four. This first slide represents a summary of our proposed revenues, reflecting the multiple funds that we manage. State Public School Fund, our local current expense capital outlay, child nutrition fund, and our donations and grants fund. The donation and grants fund is fondly known as FundAid to us. The one fund that is not represented on this slide is our federal fund. These projections are either based on our estimates and projections or information that we receive from the Department of Public Instruction for our State Public School Fund. Our federal grants don't typically come to us until around October, so that's why that's not included in, in this. As you see, our total proposed revenues for the twenty-three, twenty-four, at this point, exclusive of the federal grants, is a hundred and thirty, a little over a hundred and thirty-eight million dollars. This graph, graphic will just show you the percentages based on the proposed revenues that were in the previous slide. State makes up about seventy-three percent of our total funding, and local makes up about eighteen percent. If we were to factor in, our, our federal funding is somewhere in the load of, it's sixty, sixty million dollars, sixty, sixty-two, sixty-three million dollars, excuse me. So, that factored in would dilute some of these numbers somewhat, but our federal funding makes up about twenty-eight percent of our, of our total funding. And as you see, our local makes up about eighteen percent, child nutrition about seven, and donation and grants is less, less than one percent. Our current expense proposed revenue shows from Nash County appropriation is just slightly more than twenty-one million dollars, including four hundred thousand dollars for fines and forfeits. Edgecombe County appropriation, including the differential, is just under two-point-seven million dollars along with an estimated forty thousand dollars for fines and forfeits, bringing the total of proposed budget to twenty-four million, nine hundred thirty-eight thousand, fifty-five dollars. I'd like to mention to you that there's been no inflation adjustment in, in our projected, or proposed budget, excuse me. Also, the budget was compiled based on an estimated five percent salary increases before we calculated supplements. As you know, if you pay attention to the General Assembly, you'll see, you know, the governor will release a budget, their house will release a budget, the senate, I think, has just recently released a budget. Each one of those may have different amounts of projected salary increases for state employees. Not knowing exactly yet how this is going to shake out, I use five percent. That may come in a little bit lower, depending on once the budget is finalized. But for right now, we projected five percent salary increases and then calculated our supplements based on those adjusted salaries. Also, our, the supplements I used are paid, the supplements we paid us, paid to our certified staff is based on a percentage, and I use the average of the four, of four percentages. We used eleven-point-seven-five percent in calculating our supplements. Our retirement rate has increased point-one-two percent, up from twenty-four and a half percent to twenty-four-point-six-two percent. And again, this is based on information that we received from the Department of Public Instruction. Those numbers could vary somewhat as well. But our hospitalization rate has gone up two-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars per in, per employee. For twenty-three, excuse me, for twenty-two, twenty-three, we're paying seven-thousand, three-hundred-ninety-seven dollars per employee. Projected right now is seven-thousand, six-hundred-and-nineteen per employee, as I said, for an increase of about two percent, excuse me, three percent. Our estimated effect on our, on our proposed budget, of the increase in the retirement and the increase in the hospitalization rate, we're projecting to affect our proposed budget about four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. In addition to our budget, we have factored in another three-hundred-and-four thousand dollars for hospitalization for international foreign teachers to fill very difficult positions, to, to fill positions that we're having difficulty in filling, our teaching positions. This is basically a summary of how Edgecombe County appropriation was apportioned out for the twenty-two, twenty-three year. This could vary from year to year. But as you'll notice, the two primary uses of the money have been toward athletics and student activities as well as district-wide equipment and supplies. Those two alone make up about sixty-three percent. Our capital, our proposed revenue is just under one-point-four million dollars, to be specific. One million, three-hundred-ninety-six thousand and three, eight-hundred, excuse me, I can't read that far without glasses. I'm sorry, one million, three-hundred-ninety-six thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety dollars. The next three slides are simply a comparison of our beginning initial budget for twenty-two, twenty-three versus our proposed budget for twenty-three, twenty-four. You may see some significant variant, variances between some of these PRCs. If I were to show you our current budget for twenty-two, twenty-three, right now, these numbers will be more closely aligned. But to be consistent, we wanted to use the beginning budget versus the beginning budget. And the last slide is FundAid, donations and grants. It shows you the, our projected revenues and also how we intend to expand, expand those funds. And we're projecting this, this particular fund to be a million and three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. And these funds are those that are restricted to Nash County Public Schools, whether that be indirect cost, ROTC funds, student, driver's ed funding, things like this. These are funds that are specific to Nash County Public Schools. Do you have any questions?
Now, how can your utility be exactly the same from twenty-two to twenty-three?
Well, this is a question, and I don't know how it's going to net out exactly over the course of the year, but, I mean, I don't know what our year-to-date is right now. I don't have that figure. I would gladly get it for you if you like, but I use basically the same number. Because as I'm, I basically use the same number for this year, for the twenty-three, twenty-four. I'm not aware of, I've not received any indication of any significant increases in our utility rates.
I was going to ask the same question about charter schools, by not knowing whether the number's going to increase or decrease. I see you use the same.
It's a proposed, it's a proposed budget. I do not have a, I don't think this is sound aloof. I don't have a crystal ball to be able to project what we're going to have. In our charter schools, we're paying for about twenty-five floors, twenty-five charter schools, and averaging somewhere around thirteen hundred students per month that we're paying for. So, again, I use, I use the same amount. Depending upon enrollment, you know, how many students maybe come back to Nash, how many may leave Nash County public school, we go to charter schools. I understand that that number can vary.
I'll be, I'll be.
That's the perfect person to speak on, but the international faculty, are they, are you, are those faculty coming? Might be someone else that needs to speak on that, put them in, but.
We have some, we should speak to it, but they, we use agencies, they bring these, they bring these people here from other countries to teach. They get them into the country, they take care of the paperwork and their visas, et cetera. And one of the organizations that we use does not pay benefits for their, for these employees, if you will, these teachers. So we're going, we have to cover that for them. The other, the other agencies that we use, the other two agencies we use do pay the benefits for those, because there are people coming through there.
And you're using those for harder to build positions?
Yes.
Good evening. Can you hear? I'm gonna piggyback off your question and the response that Mr. Hale gave you. There's a difference between a J-one visa candidate and a H-one visa candidate. The H-one visa can lead to permanent residency, but we do have to fund the medical benefits for them. J-one visa is temporary, and that's why the company or agency that we partner with, that's the reason why they pay all of the benefits associated with that staff. So I'm here to speak to you about SRO funding, and this slide is gonna give you an idea of, it's gonna give you an idea of the type of funding that we received over the course of the COVID years. It also gives you a breakdown of the funding that was spent and how we used it during those years. So PRC one sixty-three, which is the CARES funding, and it's the first funding that we received for COVID in a week. We received approximately four point two million, and we did have to liquidate all funds, and that was done at the end of two, twenty-twenty-two. It also gives you a breakdown of how those funds were liquidated. So SRO two, which is PRC one seventy-one, we have received about nine hundred and fifty, I'm sorry, about sixteen million, and we have a remaining balance of nine hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. It gives you a breakdown of how we use those funds, and we do have to liquidate all of those funds by the end of this school year, and we are on point for June seventh. SRO three, PRC one eighty-one, we received about thirty-six million dollars. We have approximately thirteen million remaining. It gives you an outline of how we have used those funds, and we do have until the end of next year to liquidate all of those funds. And as I stated, we are on point to ensure that we send no funding back to the federal government. Any questions about that slide?
Okay, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
I understand that you, uh, and to answer, you had to do a special tutoring. Can you tell me what that is?
For tutoring, so there were several components to tutoring. Uh, some came in the form of CTE, some came academically. Uh, we used it pretty much to fund the staff and for that stipends for the teachers as well. Um, it would probably be more beneficial for, there's some of an instructional team to come board, but it was outlined exactly how we could use those funds.
My name is Leon Serre Jr., and I'm here to present about school safety, equipment, and SROs. So I wanna talk to you about EVOL Weapons Detection System. The EVOL Express Weapon Detection System provides powerful sensor, sensor technology with proven artificial intelligence. Security ecosystem integration and comprehensive venue analytics to ensure safer, more accurate, correct detections at an unprecedented speed and volume. The system has a single and dual lane system. A single lane can approximately scan two hundred students, excuse me, two thousand students in an hour, five hundred students in fifteen minutes. Dual lanes can approximately scan four thousand students in an hour, five hundred students per lane in fifteen minutes. The system, the system is ten times faster than your regular metal detectors. It's easy to be broken down, mobile. There are currently school systems in North Carolina using this system, Charlotte Med, Guilford, Johnston, and Person Counties. Pitt and Weldon and Durham have been in conversations, uh, concerning this product. There are twenty-five school districts and charter schools throughout the country who are currently using this system, and some of those states include Virginia and Maryland and Georgia. The total cost for a four-year lease on the EVOL system is as follows. Four high schools with dual lanes and three high schools with single lanes, for a four-year total cost of nine hundred twenty-nine thousand, five hundred seventy-six dollars, one cent. Six middle schools with single lanes, four-year total, six hundred seventy-three, two hundred eight dollars and twenty-six cents. Total four-year cost for middle and high schools, one million, six hundred two, seven hundred eighty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents. This is a picture of the single lane. And then you have a picture of the dual lane. This is what it proposed, sorry. This safety equipment is what it proposed, for school system this year, for the school system for the twenty, uh, two, twenty-three, twenty-four year. So moving to, um, SROs. So we were appointed up to receive a school safety grant for middle and elementary SROs. Nash County Public Schools is in the low wealth school district, and it's currently in year one of a two-year school safety grant that we receive from middle schools and elementary SROs. The funding is a four-to-one match, so we have six middle school SROs, one per school. We have eight elementary SROs, one SRO serving two schools, that is how we wrote the grant. Uh, the grant allotted fifty thousand, fifty-five thousand dollars per SRO. So the grant pays four thousand, and then the district would pay eleven thousand per SRO, or the difference between the total cost of each SRO. So for example, the total cost of SROs was sixty-eight thousand dollars, the grant would pay forty-four thousand, and the district would pick up the difference at the twenty-four thousand. Funding for our elementary school SROs, funding source, again, is the grant I just shared with you, the four-to-one match. The state set the four-to-one match at fifty-five thousand dollars, forty-four, that they would pay eleven thousand, or the difference coming from the school district. We have a total of eight elementary SROs that we're, uh, funding. Eight times that forty-four thousand gives you three hundred fifty-two thousand dollars, will be paid by the grant. The approximate total cost for elementary school SROs, five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. So the approximate cost to the district for elementary SROs would be two hundred twenty-three thousand dollars per school year. Now that could, uh, differ, uh, in school years based on who the SROs are that's being hired, what agency they're working for. Uh, we know that there's an increase in cost, um, for, uh, SROs for law enforcement, uh, throughout the region that, as they try to keep up and be competitive and keep people in the law enforcement business. So the numbers that I am sharing with you, they are not exact numbers, but these are, uh, approximate numbers. Funding for middle school SROs. Again, the same, um, figure when you look in terms of what the grant funding was for the four-to-one batch. So we have a total of six middle school SROs, six times that forty-four thousand gives you two hundred sixty-four thousand to be paid for by the grant. With an approximate total cost for middle school SROs equaling four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, which will be a cost to the district of one hundred sixty-one thousand dollars per year. So funding for our high school SROs. So during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year was the first time that the state, state almost allocated specific funding for high school SROs. So in the past, the state would say that you have your O-sixty-nine or some of the state funding that you could pull money from, uh, to pay for SROs. But this year, they allocated a specific dollar amount for each high school to have an SRO. And that dollar amount was fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars per high school for SROs. So we have six, if you multiply that six times, you're fifty-eight, four eighty. It gives you three hundred fifty thousand, eight hundred eighty dollars to be paid for by the state. With an approximate cost for high school SROs being four hundred eighty thousand dollars, with the total cost to the district for high school SROs being one hundred twenty-nine thousand, one hundred twenty dollars per year. So SRO funding that is not covered by grant or money specifically allocated for high school SROs will come from state O-sixty-nine at risk a lot. So the estimated cost from O-sixty-nine during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year is approximately two hundred ninety-one thousand, four hundred sixty-eight thousand, sixty-six cents. Again, this number is not an exact number, but this is an estimation. The estimated total cost from O-sixty-nine during the twenty-two, uh, excuse me, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year would be five hundred thirteen thousand, one hundred twenty dollars. Without the specified high school SRO and grant funding, the estimated cost of six high schools, six middle schools, and eight ele-, eight elementary school SROs from O-sixty-nine during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year would be one million, four hundred eighty thousand dollars. So just some of the school safety measures that we have in place, um, coming up for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Um, we have cameras in all of our school, those cameras are located on the outside, the exterior and interior of our buildings. We have access to troll doors at the main entrances of all of our buildings, all exterior doors are locked during the school day. We have SROs in our schools. There are safety drills, which include fire lockdown, tornado, and tabletop exercises that our schools have to follow through with. There's a Say Something Anonymous reporting app. We also are, um, hopefully going to get the EVOL Weapons Detection System up and going for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We have school safety plans completed in the school risk management plan website. Uh, we have a district safety team, and we also have the emergency red panic button. One thing that is not listed here is that we, uh, have a very robust risk assessment. Um, that's for students who have threat to themselves or, or harm to others, and mental health protocols, processes, and services within our school district. Uh, we have been working, um, on the, the risk assessment process for approximately eight to nine years now. And we have been involved with the school-based mental health and focusing on SEL for our students over the past four to three years. But, but the focus of trying to have school-based mental health, um, services and processes in place for all of our schools. So we are fortunate enough, in the thirty schools that we have in Nash County Public Schools, all of them have school-based mental health services. Are there any questions for me? Yes, ma'am.
City police, or county, or combination?
We have a combination. So far, schools located within the city limits of Rockinaw, uh, Rockinaw Police Department serves those schools. And Nash County, uh, Sheriff Department serves the schools that's located up in the county.
What about this school?
This will be Rockinaw Police Department.
Any other questions? So this time, we're gonna discuss some of the funding challenges that we're gonna be facing. Broken them down into four categories. One is increase in salary benefits, technology demand, demurder impact, teacher retention. What we're gonna speak up now is about the budget request, what we're gonna be asking for based on these needs. The demurder impact, recruitment, retention bonus, the officer-side look supplement, the technology refresh plan. Helen, leave your post about the. Well, leave this to be a bit of a rehash from what I went over a little bit earlier. As I mentioned, um, we're projecting, uh, in our budget, a five percent salary increase. Uh, anytime the state of North Carolina decides to give a raise, that's wonderful for state employees and such, but it also has a direct impact on our local budget in that we pay supplements to help, uh, supplement these salaries to keep qualified people here in our area. But that also affects, you know, our, our, affects our local budget, affects our federal budget because the federal, the raises that are then given to federal employees, the federal funding has to support those, uh, those increases and those raises. And the federal, the federal grants also pay for their, uh, their bonuses and supplements. But whatever the state gives bonuses to, uh, give salary increases, excuse me, to, uh, to the employees, it has a direct impact on our, on our local budget. As I mentioned, um, you'll see here, as I mentioned before, certified teachers, certified principals, uh, classified employees. We estimated five percent, bus drivers at six and a quarter. And as I did mention to you earlier, social security will remain the same, our match is seven point six five percent. Our retirement has increased point one two percent, and our hospitalization went up two hundred and twenty-two dollars per employee.
Good evening. Uh, I'm here tonight to share some brief information about our one-on-one refresh, technological refresh plan. And maybe two years ago, we developed a refresh plan, uh, and the goal of that plan was to place adequate and equitable devices in the hands of our staff and our students. So we're actually in our second year of that plan, and it has been a success, very successful. All right, and to remind you what that plan looks like, let's go to this next slide. As you can see, the devices for our pre-K through first grades, they will be refreshed every four years.
As you can see, the devices for our pre-k through first grades, they will be refreshed every four years. And the reason for this is those particular devices are grade-specific, so they stay in that grade level. Our second grade, fifth grade, and ninth grade will receive new devices every year and. And they will keep those devices for up to four years. And the reason we did this, we mapped those devices to the years of warranty. That makes sense? We also did not forget about our staff members. We have about roughly maybe nineteen, eighteen hundred, maybe to nineteen hundred staff members. So the plan is to refresh a quarter of their devices every year as well. And I think that equals up to maybe around four hundred and fifty devices per year. The cost to maintain such a refresh plan is about one point five million dollars. Now, we utilize the SRO funding to support this plan. But how, however, as this law has stated earlier, the particular SRO funding that we were using is set to expire this December. Okay? So we will need to secure a funding source to support our refresh plan. And as the technology director, it's my priority to make sure that our students, our staff have the most updated devices and the best they've got. So that they're able to do their work and also to get the best instruction. So are there any questions for me? Yes, ma'am.
I'm not going to lose this on what, but what happens to the third, fourth, sixth, seventh grade?
Okay, when you are, let's, let's start with second grade. When I'm a second grade, I get a new device, that device stays with me up to four years.
Okay.
Okay, that makes sense?
I am here to speak about the recruitment retention bonus plan that we have in place. As you know, there is a teacher shortage. You can visit any website or any vacancy list or any district or any school within the state and you will see the risk vacancies there. As in the means to recruit, compete, and retain highly qualified staff, we do try to offer incentives for our new recruits and to retain the staff that we do have. We do look at criteria when determining what is most needed in our district. And we focus on our hard-to-fill positions as well as the content areas of those testing rates. We also look at the local performance schools in our district. We get that information from the state and we tier it based on the lowest five percent, ten percent, and such. We also, a means of trying to retain our staff, we focus on all part-time and full-time staff. And we just get tried to maintain a certain bonus or stipend that's given to them annually. And we do request a budget of about five hundred thousand a year in order for us to fulfill these needs. Questions about that?
It's not this one, you've got to say annually to the second reason this position.
In which group?
Fourth.
Those are recruited, yes. We paid a three annual ministerial fee.
But it's only one time, it's not paid annually, because it's.
So I'm here to speak about the local. If you've been following the governor and the budget, we do have a new general statute that is coming down the pipe for our state non-certified salary ranges. And they're asking pretty much with this general statute that we provide local supplement scales for our non-certified staff. We know that all of our certified staff receive a certain percentage of supplement monthly. However, the classified staff does not. With that being said, we also know that they have not received an increase based on a step scale that is ordained by our DPI in many, many years. So in order to compete, in order to retain these employees, we're asking, we're not only asking, but the general statute is probably going to mandate it. If it's approved, that we receive some type of funding to offset the salaries for the non-certified staff. It goes into details, just sharing exactly what I have just discussed with you. And it also gives us an idea of what the pay rates could possibly look like. We have provided you with an idea of the positions that falls underneath the non-certified range. We have our bus drivers and monitors, our child nutrition, our clerical maintenance, teacher assistants, and transportation department. The first column gives you an idea of the total gross amount of all salaries combined for the year. And if we were to provide them with at least a one-point-five supplement, a two percent supplement, or two-point-five supplement increase, it gives you the amount that we will be asking for in terms of supporting this general statute.
Including what we've done is have a chart where as the area of these, the retention bonus will be five hundred thousand. The refresh plan would be one-point-five million. Local supplement non-certified would be five hundred thousand. The benefits additional be four hundred fifty, would be about two-point-nine-five million dollars. Request for next year. So that would be the request for next year. This time, are there any questions for any familiar from that thing?
Just open it up for discussion. Any questions? For any of the board? We can just open it up, the board? Any question, any question you have with us? Any questions that the board would like? If that's about.
Now, this request where I see twenty-four and a twenty-seven. Total twenty-four and a twenty-seven.
Total would be about twenty-seven million, but that's the total. And a three million, three million dollar request.
And what of that twenty-seven is the request of income?
I assume that would be the eleven percent possibly. To handle, that's the three million dollar request, what would that be about?
Four hundred thousand dollars.
Other questions?
Nash County is about twenty-two, not counting about four hundred thousand minus four. I'm using round figures.
Any questions out there? We've been having a question session. We wish to begin our discussion, our board, on this. And that's what we're saying at the end of this morning. And just a moment, please, a question. God, don't you mind me asking, I have a lot of. Thank you, thank you, do what else? Perhaps, I'd like to also thank the staff for the presentation, our presentation, your screen. We're not at your table. So, so a lot of friends who talk to me, I don't understand them too. I don't understand how people set up until I hear it, because I'm housework. And I just thank you for the, the job that you do there. I'm standing very different, but. And I'm hoping to do a few similar things on here. So that feels like, feels like what I was intending, my intention. And at this time, if there are any other comments or questions from our board? And I'll take them once you put down.
So what's taken?
Any questions? Only if there is nobody but the guy.
Aye.
All of those, and I'm not a chef.